I know for a fact that Peter's not going to be able to make it today. So this is an official meeting. We do have a quorum present. And I was hoping that you could take over the duties as chairman, at least for this meeting.
Absolutely, since it appears that I'm the only one that didn't do my due diligence and send in written questions. I'll be happy.
Well, you can still, we'll still have an opportunity for additional questions, but I wanted to get, you know, just some anticipation for the, particularly the folks at DEC to see what the line of questioning would be.
It looks to me really good ones, so.
So we can start the meeting. I have a, just to let everybody know, I have a number of people on. I have five classified as panelists, myself and four town or planning board members. And then we have 10 attendees. I don't recognize any names and a majority of them are, looks like their phone numbers coming through. So I assume they're either the applicant or his agents or the members from DEC. So we'll have a chance to have everybody introduce themselves that's on the call.
Jim?
Yeah.
Did you get the notice from Eric looking for you to resend the link?
No, I did not.
Yeah, I just got a little notice that asked for the link to be reset to him.
To Eric?
Yes, sir.
Yep, Katrina, can you do that? Just resend the, yeah, she's gonna do that right now.
Okay, good.
Well, I'll keep an eye out for him coming through once we resend that link.
So you want to do the introductions before we call the meeting to order, or?
Yeah, 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 I can do that much. Okay, so for the benefit of everybody on the call, in terms of town-related folks, we have myself, Jim Martin, zoning administrator. We have Katrina Flexon, she's the building department clerk and she's also taking the minutes. There, just so everybody's clear, there will be minutes of this meeting made and as a normal meeting, because we do, like I said, we do have a quorum. And then affiliated with the town planning board, we have John Arnold acting as chairman for this one particular meeting. Jerry Bouchard, Meredith Mathias and Ann Purdue is our other board member. So that, we have four members present constituting a quorum. And beyond that, I just have some names coming up on the attendee list that I'll read off. Kevin Wood, Sue Monberger, a person named Charlie, Andrew Millspa. Oh, Eric is on, so I'm gonna promote him to panelist. And so he's the fifth town or planning board member on. I see Bryce. I said Andrew Millspa, Ray Appi is on. I know for a fact he is representing the applicant. And that's all I have right now. And a Mr. Unby. I'm not right, I'm just reading what I see here. And then several with just phone numbers. So that's everybody on the call that I see so far.
Mike Sundberg with DEC, Air Division.
Oh, great, thank you. Yeah, so if we can have everybody on the call introduce themselves, I tried my best to read names, but just, just go ahead.
Thanks, Ray Appi with Saratoga Biochar, Ray Appi with Saratoga Biochar. Thank you, Jim.
Yep. Next person?
Charles Dumas with Lemre Kreisler, representing Saratoga Biochar.
Okay.
Bryce Meeker with Saratoga Biochar.
Andrew Millspa with Sterling Environmental Consultant for Saratoga Biochar.
Okay.
Sue Monberger Sterling, representing Biochar.
Next person, we have a number of phone numbers that are shown. From a 518-6623-1200, I assume that's DEC representatives.
Yeah, that's Kate White, DEC.
Okay. For the DEC reps, do we know if Beth McGee is gonna be on, or is she just having you people sign in?
I expected her.
Okay. Because she's been my principal contact to set up this meeting.
So also with DEC, Kevin Wood in the solid waste program in Region 5, Wormsburg.
Thank you. Okay, and this was a public meeting, so the, the public could attend and as well as the press was properly noticed and published. So there may be just general members of the public not as well, just for everybody's information, because this is a public meeting. So John, I think we're all set.
Alrighty, so we'll call this meeting to order, the special meeting of the Town of Moreau Planning Board on January 12th. We'll call it in at 9:06 a.m. This is a special meeting called to gain information and details from, in this case DEC, but specialist engineers to help us to determine, I guess, our determination for SEAKER on the Saratoga Biochar Solutions Project. There were some, there were some products or process in the SEAKER that led us to large, moderate to large difficulties or not difficulties, but situations. And we didn't seem to understand, or at least as a board, I didn't feel comfortable as a board member deciding whether the remediation that was proposed was adequate. So the members of the board were invited to this special meeting. They've been asked to send in questions in writing ahead of time. And of course, all questions will be addressed, not only the written ones, but any that come up today in today's meeting. I don't know, Jim, if you want to just follow the order as they're submitted on our questions for discussion, or if you wanna, if you want me to Saratoga Biochar to just give us a quick introduction to their project, or can we dispense with that?
Yeah, I, I think given the shortness of time here, I think we only have an hour with the DEC folks. I think everybody on the call from DEC as well as town people are aware of the project. I didn't see a need for that, not unless, you know, Ray, is there some sort of update or anything you need to provide us with? Or can we get?
No, Jim, thank you for offering. Sorry about that. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, I think you got two speakers on, must be. You're getting an echo.
Yes, I am.
That was fine.
How about now?
Still bad.
Okay, how about now?
Hey, Jim.
Yeah.
Well, why don't we skip the intro?
Okay. Why don't we just get right into it, John?
Have we eliminated our echo? Oh, good. We have. Okay. Well, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, this is an information gathering meeting anyway.
That's correct. There was never any anticipation of any action being taken, any business being performed.
Then moving right along, do you want each of the members that are here to present their questions that were sent in writing, or would you like me to just read them and?
I mean, that's between you and the members. I think it's fine if you just read them. And then at some point, I want to be, to have everybody the chance to ask additional questions or follow-up. But let's start with what we have.
But then I'm gonna ask Jerry to read his, because he does a good job with them anyways. Can you do that, Jerry?
Not a problem.
Thank you.
Good morning. I guess my, my questions will all center around pretty much the same subject, which was what I struggled with during the, during the environmental review that we performed. So question one. And I'm asking, I guess, some guidance from DEC here is how do we categorize the applicant stated anticipated CO2 outputs in terms of their impact? And I guess I'm putting that, or I know I'm putting that in terms of the, the environmental assessment forms that we were filling out. So when we, when we're asked to determine what is the impact, how do we categorize what the applicant has stated their output to be?
Is somebody from DEC able to address that question?
Yeah, this is Mike Sundberg. I don't know on that form how you would, what, what you would call it, medium or high. I know that they have to submit a climate leadership, Community Protection Act demonstration, basically, to show that they're compliant with the law. And basically, that's the CO2 emissions.
Well, I guess that, if I could pause right there, my impression of the discussion we had when we went over this, for example, it says in Section 6, Impacts on Air, Item A. If the proposed action requires federal or state air emissions permits, the action may also emit one or more greenhouse gases at or above the following levels. And then small item I, the very first one, is more than 1,000 tons per year of carbon dioxide. And our initial preliminary response to that was, might or too large impact may occur, because the, the applicant said, yes, they're gonna be more than 1,000 tons a year. And as laypeople, we have no idea what that means relatively speaking. Is 1,000 tons a year a lot? And that's a problem that can't be mitigated and we need an impact statement? Or is that something that's fairly typical, can be mitigated, and relatively speaking, is not that bad? Jerry, am I, am I framing that pretty well?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, so that's the question.
Jim, the only thing I add is, it wasn't like, is it more than 1,000? And we were looking at an estimate of about 1,200. It was, is it more than 1,000? And I think the estimate that was given was 100,000.
Yes, that's correct. That's a good, that's a good point to make.
It was 100 times more than the, the, the bar that we were given, so.
Yeah, so in, in relative terms, is that something to be concerned about, or is that typical for a facility like this? I mean, we, we need some context.
Jim, this is Andrew with Sterling. Can I add a little more context to that from our?
Yep.
So as you just mentioned, the part of the struggle for the, at the meeting was that this question in the part two is 1,000 tons per year or more. And what we are describing is that the application is upwards of 90,000 tons per year. But the threshold in the regulations for minor and major facility permits and designation is 100,000 tons. So this is still a minor facility in that context, but there was some difficulty grasping why the part two was focusing on 1,000 tons per year when there's.
Exactly.
Maybe Mike can provide some context.
Mike?
Yeah, 100,000 tons is the, is the threshold for what we call new source review project. Those are the biggest of the big. This is not that big, but it's, it's pretty close to the limit.
Hey, Mike, this is, this, Mike, this is Kevin. What's the, this is, I think I remember you saying this is gonna get a state facility permit?
Yes, this is, this is not large enough to get a Title V permit. It's close, but it's not that big.
What's the major source threshold for CO2 for Title V?
It's 100,000 tons.
Oh, okay.
So when, when, when you do the permit review, the permit application, what, what has to be demonstrated to make this something that receives a permit?
They would get a registration if it was a small facility. That means they're, all of their emissions are less than half of the Title V level. That was the, the main one that they're close to is 100 tons a year of NOx.
Okay, so, so what has to be done for that to be permitted?
They, they have to demonstrate that the impacts, the ambient impacts on the neighbor is okay, basically. They have to demonstrate, tell us what the emissions are gonna be. We'd have to have them stack tests for some of them to make sure that they're correct. They'd have to do modeling to make sure that the impacts of those emissions are not above our guidelines. If they can do all of that, then we give them a permit.
Okay, and what are your guidelines?
We have a list of every single toxic chemical you can imagine, and, and we have an allowable limit for each of them.
And if they're on, and if they're under that limit, they get a permit?
If they're under that limit, we will give them a permit normally, yes.
So I guess the question from our board is, when we see what we consider to be a moderate to large impact, which, you know, it's not 100 times more, it's 90 times more than the baseline. Then on the EAF, we're gonna put down that this is a moderate to large impact. Now ask us, what is the, you know, what is the remediation of that? Is the remediation of that studies that you make them do to get the permit and then testing that you do as a state agency from that point forward to make sure they're, they're complying with their permit?
We won't be tussling them for CO2, but they will have to do a demonstration upfront to show that they've done everything they can to minimize them and that it complies with the act.
Okay. Okay, I'm gonna ask the applicant then, what is your likelihood of being able to comply with the act and get a permit?
This is Ray Appi. Our likelihood is 100%. We've already overestimated the CO2 and CO2 equivalents.
Okay, thank you. Then my question is back to DEC. I've done a little bit with this kind of thing, trying to get a solid waste, solid waste facility permitted in California, as a matter of fact, in the South Coast Air Quality Management District. And what had to be done there is, we had to demonstrate that the emissions we were putting into the air was going to be mitigated through our buying down other emission producers in the district. Is something of a similar fashion done here? In other words, if, say they're gonna put in 90,000 tons of CO2 into the atmosphere, do they have to demonstrate that they're doing something to counteract that and keep this at a net neutral, or is that not the case?
We don't require that at this time. We would do something like that for NOx if they were over 100 tons. They would have to buy NOx credit emissions from someplace else. But if they're under 100 tons, they don't have to do that.
Okay, so it sounds like they're meeting the, the standard as per the, the permit anyhow.
Yes.
Okay.
Jerry, would you like to roll into question number two for now?
Sure.
I can add one thing to that. This is Bryce.
This is Ann. Can I ask one question before we move on? Because Jerry's question is very similar to one I asked. And Mike made a comment about, in the context of a registration, that the applicant would demonstrate, demonstrate the ambient impacts on the community. If I heard you correctly, Mike, what is that?
Yes, they have to, they have to model the emissions of all the toxic, all the toxics and demonstrate through their model that the, the highest impact anywhere outside of the facility is underneath our guideline.
So they're modeling?
Does that answer your question?
And so they would have to do that in the context of the full permit as well?
They would have to do that before they, they would even get a permit. They would have to show us that modeling. Once they're built, they would have to do some stack testing to demonstrate that the inputs to the model were correct.
And have you gotten that data yet?
We have not.
Okay. That's all I have.
Okay, Jerry, would you like to go to question?
Yeah, question two, the point of question two, from my, from my personal view is, how, how do we determine whether or not we've got everyone that needs to weigh in at this point? Is, is that something that DEC takes care of during the permitting? When we start talking about whatever level of outputs are, and I'm not trying to characterize them as being harmful at all, but what the outputs are and their impacts on areas other than Moreau, I don't, I don't know how to how to quantify what those, how far the impacts reach. You know, so I'm, I guess I'm, I'm looking for DEC to tell me, is there something here that Moreau needs to be doing in terms of engaging neighboring communities? Or does that happen during the licensing and permitting review that you folks perform?
The permit is public notice for 30 days. The public can ask us for any of the information that we've used in the permit process. I don't know if you remember, we went through this kind of thing with Lehigh, with the rag retail a few years ago. And we had a lot of comments and we had to address all their comments.
Yeah, that predates me.
And it's, Mike, isn't it, it's different too, if it's a Title V facility, there's some notifications that have to be made to neighboring states and whatnot, right?
Uh, yes. For the Title V, we would notify Vermont.
But, but they're not at that threshold, because the Title V threshold is 100,000.
Well, yeah, 100 tons of NOx or 100,000 tons of CO2.
Yep.
Do you have a, a public hearing with, I guess, the community?
We have a public notice, goes in the paper and it goes on our website. If there's demand for it, we may require a public hearing. We haven't held a public hearing in, in this region in over 10 years, I don't believe, for an air permit.
Okay.
Hey, everybody, I, I think I have Beth McGee on. She was having a hard time getting connected.
Oh, great. Oh, yeah, let me see if I can make sure that she's unmuted.
Well, no, it's actually, I, I called her on a cell phone and I'm holding her next to the speaker, so. Can you hear?
Hello?
Try again, Beth.
I can hear all of you. Are you able to hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Thanks, Beth. And thanks for setting all this up.
So when it comes to holding a public hearing, that would be based on the amount of public interest and feedback that we get during the public comment period. If we get significant comments from the public, then we would have to decide if we think a public hearing is necessary at that point. We typically, like Mike was saying, that's not something that we have typically had to do in the past. But that doesn't mean that that wouldn't be required on this project.
Okay.
All right, well, in my mind, that satisfies my question in terms of are we doing what we need to do? Last question from me is, I was just wondering if the DEC had any, any guidance they can offer, any information for us that we may need in terms of the EAF in understanding the applicant's process, meaning this, this process that's being used to, you know, convert the solid waste into the end product. Is there anything that, that the, the state has that would be useful to us in making the determination in regards to the EAF?
Well, I can't speak up to the technical aspects of the process, although we've got up to Kevin and Mike to do that. But what I would kind of try to assure the town of is the fact that DEC, you know, is still reviewing this application. And we review these applications very closely, and they have to meet our permit issuance standards before we can move forward with the process. So I realize the SEAKER form is a little daunting. There's a lot of questions on there. But in addition to that SEAKER documentation that you're doing, is this very large and thorough review by the, by the state agency? So I feel like that should give you some level of comfort in trying to work through that SEAKER process and answer those questions.
Beth, this is John Arnold from the planning board. I think the question that, the, the sticking point we ran into with the EAF was the fact that we, we reached a point where, in this case, the carbon dioxide, we didn't, hadn't even gotten NOx at that point, but the carbon dioxide had significantly exceeded the bar that was put on the SEAKER form as far as considered to be an impact. Okay, so we considered a moderate to high impact, because it was 90-some times more than that bar. But then we're asked what mitigating factors are put into place or remediation to manage this? And, and I think we're trying to figure out what we can consider a remediation from our viewpoint. Is that remediation your permit process? Or DEC testing, or what is it that we can consider that remediation to move forward on the SEAKER?
I think that might be a good question for our air program, Mike. I don't know if you can speak to that, what kinds of things the facility is gonna need to do in order to control CO2 emissions?
Well, they have to submit a, an analysis showing they're doing everything that they can, and it's in compliance with the act.
Okay, so they're gonna have to demonstrate to us as part of their application and our review process that those emissions are going to meet our permit issuance standards. And if they can't do that, we wouldn't be able to issue the permit.
So they, they submit that to you, but from our viewpoint, is that adequate for us to say that remediation will take place? Or that this will be handled in the regulatory process?
I think that's up to the board to deter, to determine their level of comfort with that. But I would think, you know, if you could, if you said that the facility is going to need to demonstrate compliance with the state permit issuance standards, I would, I would think that that would be adequate justification and mitigation.
Okay, all right. Anybody else have anything else on that question?
I just have one more thing on the CO2 thing. Okay, you know, we're, we're hearing that this is somewhere, conservatively speaking, as a, as a, you know, a very conservative estimate, somewhere in the range of 90,000 tons a year. What has, what has been sold, so to speak, about this whole process of a, a, you know, this, this fertilizer being produced is that it's going to affect, in fact, eliminate many forms of CO2 in the, in the conventional handling of this feedstock. So in other words, when they get done making this fertilizer and it's spread on the ground and it does what it's supposed to do, ultimately, this is supposed to somehow have a, a net positive in CO2 emissions in that broad macro view. And I, is that in fact the case here? Is that why this whole thing is being done and is viewed as such an environmentally positive process? Is that not correct? Ray?
Yeah, Jim, I thank you. And by the way, also fix the, the echo issue.
Yeah, you're much better.
Yeah, thanks for directing the question our way. So yes, the, the answer to the question. So first of all, let's talk a couple of things about relative to nomenclature. We would refer to it as a carbon negative project, meaning that we're gonna sequester more carbon than we emit.
Yeah, that's my point. So that's why I'm hung up on this 90,000 being a gross number, but, you know, what is the ultimate impact here?
So the ultimate impact is to sequester more carbon and carbon dioxide and carbon dioxide equivalents, things such as NOx and methane, which are normally emitted into the atmosphere from this waste material in various ways, and capture all that as a solid in the fertilizer and put it back in the ground where it came from, where it belongs, versus up in the atmosphere. Of course, in that process, we will have some CO2 emissions. So yes, that, so as you just sort of framed that, you're correct. That is what we're intending to do here. And while I have the floor for just a moment, I'd like to ask, probably Mike this question, and/or anybody who, who is comfortable to answer it. It's my understanding that carbon dioxide itself is not normally considered a waste under hazardous waste regulations at the EPA level or New York State. So I would just wanna clarify that, because I think the word toxic materials was used earlier. And secondly, if I understood the outcome of our last attendance at the planning board meeting in December 13th, the question was, what would CO2 emissions of this quantity mean for the community of Moreau relative to human health? And so I wonder if we could sort of focus the end of this conversation back to that.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Yeah, we don't consider CO2 a toxic. The toxics would be more things like mercury and PTHS.
Okay.
If we can move back into our questions then.
Okay, thank you.
Meredith, would you like to take a shot? Are you there, Meredith?
I am. I'm sorry. One of my questions was, when the DEC permits this, do they look at other regional out? do they look at other regional outputters, um, since there are several in Glens Falls and along the river? Do they look at this cumulatively?
We do not look at it cumulatively. Uh, we look at the point of may, the, you know, the highest point of impact and those are always spread out. And the the impact from like Finch paper would not be where your impacts would be.
Hey, Mike, don't they use the ambient monitoring network to kind of look at, um, the cumulative impacts of things in certain areas and whether or not they're meeting the ambient air quality standards? That's kind of.
Yeah, there's really, there's really none of that around here.
Okay.
Okay. Um, skip me. I gotta pull up my questions.
Okay. You want me to read the next one for you, Meredith?
I, I have it right here.
Yeah, I have them here. It's when there is a complaint to DEC, is the municipality made aware of that?
Uh, normally not. Yeah, I would say from my perspective, generally not unless we happen to know that, uh, you know, if we've dealt with the code enforcement officer or something on issues at the facility uh, in the past or, or whatever, we might reach out to that person and, and discuss it. Um, but i- if that's not the case, then not typically.
So in general, it's a one and done thing. When, once we approve the, the facility, then we hand it off to DEC and you guys take responsibility for that facility from that point forward as far as this goes. As far as the permitting and, and, um, any actions to that permit? Uh, with the exception of like traffic and noise, we don't deal with that. Okay. Like that's, those are local kind of issues that are dealt with by the code enforcement people. Okay.
Well, we have, we have a noise provision in solid waste regulations, um, that they have, they would have to meet. So we, to some extent, deal with noise.
Okay.
This is Ann. I have a quick related question. That is whether and how you monitor compliance once the permit is issued and how frequently do you monitor?
Well, they're, in this case, they're going to have an oxidizer and they're going to have scrubbers. And the, the permit requires them to continuously monitor the temperature of the oxidizer to make sure that it's working the way it's supposed to be. And the pressure drop in the scrubbers, uh, probably the pH in the scrubbers. And they're, they're required to monitor that. When we do an inspection, we check on them. But we don't have continuous monitors of the emissions. So they'll have like a, a, a test graph that's printed up of every day, you know, for those things, some type of a sensor that's monitoring it. Then you look at the records of those test results. I'm sorry.
And how, how often do you do that, Mike?
Uh, with a Title V every year with a state facility permit, not that often, sometimes only once every five years. Okay.
So on the solid waste side, under their permit, they would be uh, required to submit an annual report to us, which, um, includes all of the test data for the inbound and outbound uh, materials as the regulation requires. And we would, um, do inspections of our permitted facilities at least once a year if there's compliance issues more frequently than that.
So I, I, I think I heard you say that you do not monitor the CO2 emissions?
That's correct. So Meredith, your, your last question? We don't actually monitor the emissions of anything from the, from the site. We'll have them do a stack test and we'll and we'll check the emissions during the test. And then the monitoring is, is basically on their control devices, but we don't monitor the emissions of CO2 or really anything.
I see.
Meredith, do you want to do your last question?
Sure. Um, when these, the have a permit renewal, does the municipality have an opportunity to weigh in with any comments?
Uh, any significant permit is public notice and there's a 30-day period to, to make your comments.
And does that occur at renewal as well when it's renewed?
Yes, that's a renewal. Or any, or any significant modification.
And we provide a copy of that to the town supervisor.
Okay.
This is Jerry Bouchard. Can you tell me how often do they get re- permitted?
Uh, a state facility permit every 10 years.
Yeah, the solid waste, the solid waste permit would be five years.
Thank you both.
Ann? You have a really good list. Do you want to go at it?
And I think that, um, as Ray now noted a few minutes ago, our primary concern is the impact of this particular facility on human health in the community. Yeah. Um, and so my first question actually relates very much to that issue. Uh, first, are there any biochar facilities like this one? The state of New York. And if there are, where, what type of biosolids do they process? What has been their impact on air quality and other environmental measures like noise, odor, traffic in the community?
This is the first one.
That's what I thought. I saw an experimental one in Cornell. So.
There's one, there's one out near Syracuse that, um, it's not really biochar, but I think it's a, it's a manure, um, hyrolysis type of operation, if I'm not mistaken. Um, but there, we really don't have any of these biosolids, uh, processes like this one. We do have other biosolid processing facilities, but not of this nature.
Yeah, I think the ones I saw were agricultural in nature.
Yeah.
Have you seen, and have you, have you seen or reviewed any of these biochar facilities in other states?
No. I don't know how many there are actually. Um, Ray or anybody, do you guys know where these are in other areas?
Yeah, this is Ray. I'll chime in and I'll probably ask Bryce to chime in as well. I believe there is one either in production or still in construction in New Jersey, but the intent of that facility is, is, um, energy generation. And biochar is a moderate output of it, but that's not, it's not, it, the plant was not intended to produce a carbon fertilizer. Um, and so it's a bit different, but it has a lot of similarities. Um, Bryce, do you want to add to that?
Yes, uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Yeah, um, there's a similar company that's in, uh, New Jersey. They also have a facility, um, in, um, Kentucky or Tennessee, uh, that basically they're, they're using bio, biosolids and gasification, which is very similar to what we're doing. Uh, they mix a lot more with wood and, and their areas where, where there's wood, but they're designing one in, uh, uh, New Jersey here, very close to New York City and, uh, opening shortly. So it's better of ours, basically.
And that, that, you said it's opening shortly. So that's gone through permit review and has been permitted and approved and it's under construction?
I believe in the state of New Jersey, yes.
That, that's my understanding, Jim. Yes.
And Jim, this is Andrew with Sterling. I'm going to add that similar to that, what I was describing in New Jersey, there is a similar process performed at the Schenectady wastewater treatment plant that's prolocated there that is primarily for waste, for, um, energy production with bio, with a biochar type product as a, as a waste byproduct, but that is a um, a similar process that's currently, does have a state air permit that's been reviewed and is in operation.
When, and biochar is in a lot of areas, more, more in heavily, you know, wooded areas throughout the west coast and Rockies. Um, there's quite a few smaller producers doing it from wood and throughout uh, a lot of the south, a lot of the forestry industry produce biochar from wood. Uh, I guess what's unique here is we're, we're doing it from more or less a different resource, biosolids.
So, um, when the DEC has a project new, you know, of this kind of nature, something that they've not reviewed before, do you exercise a higher or different level of scrutiny, uh, relative to human health and other environmental impact?
We make them do more stack testing if they're unique than, than if there's other ones that have already been built other places and we have information on them. This one here, we don't have really any information other than some estimates.
And how, how does the stack test relate to the human health impacts?
Well, any, any toxics that we think might be emitted, they have to model to make sure that the, you know, the modeled impacts are okay. And then they stack test to show that, that what they modeled is actually accurate.
Did the, um, similar project in New Jersey go through an EIS?
Ann, this is Ray Appy. If I may, um, do my best to answer that question or at least provide additional information. I did, I do have access to a New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection Reason for Application document. It's a PDF dated, uh, December 1st, 2020. I'd be happy to provide the link to that and from there you could probably find out quite a bit about it.
Okay, thank you. That would be helpful.
Sure. How would?
I'd like that too.
Yeah. Would you like me to funnel that through you, Jim?
Yes, please do. And I'll, I'll, I'll distribute from there.
Very well.
So to answer that same question on the solid waste side, I mean, although we don't have any of these facilities in New York State, we do have a regulation for them. Um, it's a subpart 362 dash one, which I can provide a link to if you'd like. So we are looking at the project relative to that regulation. And in this case, you know, our permitting is handled out of the regional office. But because this was a new animal to us, we did seek the guidance of our, uh, central office biosolids experts to assist us with the review.
If I, if I may intercede for just a moment, this is John Arnold. Um, when we do traffic studies and, and we're having a public hearing, usually traffic comes up and people address the fact that there's a lot of traffic. Maybe we shouldn't do this project. And usually what we find is if traffic hits a certain threshold, the remediation isn't just don't do the project. The remediation is somebody may have to put a turn lane in or a traffic light or a four-way stop or something to that effect. In this case, you're talking about going through the permitting process, looking at the modeling, checking it for engineering and then doing stack tests. If you do stack tests and you find that their estimates for, um, output of whatever gases are there exceed state limits, okay? There's obviously, there's the remediation of they may move to a federal permit or whatever the next size facility up. But also there's remediation. Is there like a remediation, like they can just bump up the scrubbers or adapt their, their production system to meet those standards that they say they can meet? And in this case, in particular, Saratoga biochar, I believe that this is a three-phase. They're going to start with one, one processing phase, and then if that goes well, then they'll bump up to the second and the final one is the third phase. Um, is it possible that the remediation for any failure to meet state permit requirements or seeker requirements would simply be to back it off a little bit? Um, to meet them. Is that possible? I hear nobody. Did I lose everybody on that? I mean, it, it's conceivable that we would say you can't build the third, the third line if, if the emissions impacts were too high. If they can't meet the guidelines, they'd either have to reduce production or put on more controls. Okay.
So, so it is possible to modify or simply reduce the, the, the output?
Right. Once they do the stack testing, for example, NOx, they're really, they're really close to the Title V level for three units. You know, if the NOx comes in higher on the first one than they expected, then they won't be able to build all three. Okay. All right.
Hey, this is Bryce Meeker. We agree with that approach and that's, that's the intent in our design of having three phases. So we'll be able to test the first unit before we put on the second and third unit. And, you know, if, we'll do our best to modify them so we can achieve the capacity we desire, but if we can't do it, you know, we may not build that third line.
Yeah, I really want to have a chance to get through the questions. So Ann, can you continue?
Yeah, well, I'm going to condense some of them, I think, because some of the questions have been answered in one form or another. Um, my, my two and three, I think I could combine and ask whether DEC might consider imposition of conditions on a permit of this type, perhaps lowering the maximum limit or whatever else might happen. You know, whether it's a compliance measure or whatever. Or do you simply issue the permit if it, it meets the, um, the baseline requirements?
Yeah, they, they have to meet the baseline requirements upfront and as long as they do that, you know, we, we wouldn't put on more restrictions.
Okay, so once they get a, go ahead.
I would say the same would be hold true on the solid waste side too. Um, like Mike said at the beginning, the conversations, doesn't happen very often, but if for whatever reason we had, uh, you know, substantial public comment about some particular issue, um, you know, we might put permit condition on to try to address that comment. Um, but our regulations are pretty specific, um, in terms of what they have to do, uh, you know, how the materials received, stored, processed, the end product, the testing. There's a lot to it. So, um, we really just kind of reference those requirements in the permit along with their operating plan and, uh, that, that becomes their enforceable under their permit.
So, so there's, um, the DEC monitor, uh, on an annual basis, the compliance with this, the solid waste management permit?
Yeah, we do. We try to inspect our permitted facilities once a year unless there's compliance issues and we might do it more frequently than that.
Okay, so the permit that'll be issued for air or, or solid waste will basically give them a permit up to the particular limit that that permit would allow. Is that correct?
Yeah, on the solid waste side, it would be based on the, primarily based on the volume of biosolids and wood waste that they're authorized to receive. That's kind of how we set the design limit for the site.
I think that kind of answers some of my other questions then.
I, I, I thought your number four was particularly good and that's what I think resulted in, in this, you know, call essentially. And that was i- if your permit level is 100,000 tons a year, why is it 1,000 tons a year in the EAF? That's a wide discrepancy that essentially resulted in this, you know, quandary that we're in as, as, as a, you know, the body that has to do the, the form here. Why such a wide discrepancy? That's a hundredfold.
Well, Jim, I might, I might just give my input on that. I think that's because if it's over 1,000 tons per year, we need to find some form of remediation and that remediation in this case may be the permitting process and inspection of DEC. But DEC might have an answer for that.
Yeah, the concern I think is that even with remediation, they're not going to get down to 1,000, John.
Oh, no.
Well, I, I don't think the thousand is a limit. I mean, Beth, correct me if I'm wrong. This is item 6A on the EAF, but this is kind of a screening tool, you know, so I think it's just, uh, it's not, the thousand isn't a limit necessarily. It's just part of this screening tool. Is that, am I saying that correct? Beth, am I saying that correct?
Yeah, I think so. I don't think that's a limit. I think it's more of a whether or not a permit is going to be needed.
So it would seem that the DEC does not really, um, assess the project from the standpoint of the impact on the community for seeker purposes, that your permitting process is, um, limited to the, your baseline requirements. And that we need to consider ourselves, once it exceeds 1,000, what the impact is on the, the human health of the community. It didn't, basically your process does not, does not.
I would say any seeker lead agent, I would say. I would say any seeker lead agency for any project, that's that's part of that review is determining impacts on local communities, whether that be, you know, health impacts or traffic noise or, you know, any, any kind of impacts from the project. That's what the seeker review is.
A thousand tons is a tiny amount. I mean, we we have facilities to put out more than that in a day. And and CO2 doesn't have any, any toxic impact on the local community. It's a greenhouse gas thing, which is, which is a global issue. But there is no such thing as a local CO2 impact.
Also, there's no health impact, per se?
None.
Well, I I would say, I would say there's none, but it would take a lot, a much larger volume of CO2 to offset and make health issues in the community. I mean, there could be, right? I mean, if there was, if it was a large enough emission of CO2 that it displaced other needed gases, all right, it it could be, but obviously this is well below that threshold if it's not even to a a federal permit. And that's fair to say, right? I mean.
Yeah, until the, until the, you know, the greenhouse gas stuff came about, CO2 was not even regulated by the by the state or by the state.
Okay, so this is a, this is a, that's an important distinction that, again, as a layperson, I was not aware of. This is an environmental concern and its cumulative impact, you know, in a, in a wide area, not a health concern in a local community. Is that a fair statement?
That's correct.
Okay.
As long as the concentrations of CO2 are under extreme limits or extreme amounts.
Which is the case, which is the case here.
Exactly, exactly. I'm not arguing that it's not the case here, but I'm just arguing that in in a contained cell or an enclosed area, high levels of CO2 can be toxic. It's like.
Well, yeah, yeah, if you shut your garage door and right, if you shut your garage door and leave your car running and stand there, yeah.
It's carbon monoxide. That's carbon monoxide. I've worked in an ethanol plant, John, and just had some direct experience with the toxicity of CO2. You literally have to be above a chamber that has 100%, one foot, and it's not toxic. If you stick inside the chamber, it's toxic, but it's only because it's 100% you'll suffocate.
Exactly.
No, I guess that was my point.
Yeah, it's, 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 there's very low risk from CO2 and high concentration. You have to be up to like 100%, which is, you know, we're adding a small, tiny little fraction to our air supply in the local area.
Exactly. So I wasn't meaning to say that this this one came anywhere near that. I just didn't want to say there's no possibility. That's not. There is, just not in this particular case. And did you, question number seven was assessing noise levels. Did you want to ask that one? I mean, the D C said they don't do noise level, but somebody said something about solid waste has noise level limits.
Yeah, I think we can, we, yeah, we have very little time left. The question is, when you assess noise levels, can you consider vegetative cover, which is not situated on the applicant's property?
Oh, so our noise standards, let me take a look here. We don't honestly encounter this very often.
I I think, honestly, maybe I can handle that one. I've got, I've done a lot of work in noise, and to me, it's it's all about the receptor point, you know, the distance. And then what affects noise a tremendous amount is the variations in climate, you know, seasonality, even e- even even levels of humidity and so on. And obviously, the state of the vegetative cover. If you're on a, if you're in a leaf-off condition in the wintertime with low humidity levels, you may have one level of noise travel. And if it's humid and you have leaf on, then the noise travel is less. And it's also impacted by the type of noise, base levels and things like that. It's a very complex subject matter and highly dependent upon the generator, the receptor, and the conditions in between.
Yeah, that makes, that makes good sense, Jim. In the, in the solid waste permit application, the applicant noted that they failed the noise level tests without mitigation, and the mitigation they proposed was vegetative cover, which is not on their property.
This is Andrew with Sterling. I'll, I'll just clarify and add some context to that. But as as part of the application process and following the the state guidance on noise assessments, the first thing you look at is is all noise sources with no mitigation. So that would be this facility with no walls, no ceiling, everything outdoors, and only accounting for distance as the noise attenuation factor. So that's where, that's where the recommendation that it did not meet the noise standards in the in the state guidance. And that's, that's for the scenario where all noise generating equipment is is outdoors with no, no mitigation. Then taking into account mitigating factors, that's walls of the building, ceiling of the building, and other factors that both the industrial park EIS noted for noise, which was this, the vast vegetative surroundings. And the noise guidance for for the state also provides for noise attenuation associated with dense vegetation and increments of 100 feet. So that's where those, those factors came into the noise assessment, mostly to provide the context of, the overall context of there's going to be walls, there's going to be ceilings, there's going to be distance, there's going to be vegetation. If in the future that vegetation came down, the, the building's still going to provide the noise attenuation factors. And as part of the solid waste permit, and Kevin with D C could could add on to this, there, there's typically, and we expect that noise study requirement where that there would have to be actual physical noise measurements taken to demonstrate compliance. But right now, it's all hypothetical because nothing's built. It's all based on assumptions and calculations, but once it's built, clients will have to be demonstrated through actual measurements.
And this, and this can be mediated even if the vegetative cover disappears because you don't control it, and it could be taken down by somebody who does control it, right?
Exactly. So so noise generating features like like motors and grinders and anything like that can all be locally shielded in greater amounts. You can put more shielding around motors, you can put more noise attenuation in the building to mitigate that if it becomes an issue. And and things that are accounted for now are no longer there in the future.
Right, so I was, so I just looked up our noise standard, and it, it actually, the standards apply at residential locations adjacent to the facility. So what I was looking up to see if it was actually at the property line or if it was how how it was characterized in the regulation. So, yeah, I mean, the noise study would have to be basically performed, you know, at the receptors, not just at the property line.
I think to answer Ann's question number seven, I would say that it's probably not appropriate to put an awful lot of weight on vegetative cover that's not on the applicant's property, because that could be removed in the future, and the applicant wouldn't have any control over that. So I think that demonstrating that you can meet those noise requirements with that vegetative cover not being there would be most appropriate.
I agree. And the other thing I think that can be easily done, unlike the air emissions, which is, you know, we have a first-time facility here, essentially that's the case. There are tons of information sources to cite for light situations with grinders, inside walls, in similar environmental conditions that the applicant can access to give us a range of anticipated noise impact. There's a ton of information they can, they can reference to to address this question.
Right.
And and did you want to continue with your number nine?
Uh, actually, maybe eight instead, if I might.
Okay.
I think we've already gotten an answer to eight, when we, when Beth made comments relative to what we as a board need to address as opposed to the DEC. But Beth, if you want to remark further, the question was what DEC considers when determining whether it should be the lead agency in a project such as this?
Well, I think when we get a request from a local municipality to be lead agency, we try to consider whether the overall impacts from the project are more of, you know, a local nature or, you know, something that the DEC would have more more involvement with. I think in the case of a facility like this, the impacts on traffic, noise, and all of that is more local in nature. So I think that's why we determined that it was more, you know, most appropriate for the town to be the lead agency. So we, we agreed to that.
Okay.
Okay, and I might squeeze in this last question. Given this type of project is is new, has the effectiveness of the proposed treatments of the emissions on limiting particulate matter, ammonia and the like, been proven, tested, or do you feel some level of confidence that they'll work, notwithstanding this is a new process?
Yeah, we know, we know what scrubbers and oxidizers can do. And as long as they're designed properly, they should work properly. They they don't control NOx. But the, but SO2, ammonia, those should be knocked out in scrubbers without any problem.
So nit- nitrous oxide, then, is controlled simply by not producing too much of it?
Oh, well, nitro, most of the NOx is is not nitrous oxide. It's, it's, well, NO instead of N2O is what nitrous, nitrous oxide is. Most of the NOx is NO or NO2. And scrubbers and oxidizers, well, oxidizers even create NOx, and the scrubbers don't stop it. There are treatments for NOx, but we would only require them if if we thought that the emissions would would have a toxic impact in the, in the area.
Well, in terms of the treatment being proven to be effective, the process here is something new that we haven't seen before. But the technology used for the actual treatment is something that we're quite familiar with. Because it's been used at other facilities.
So I guess I'm, I'm a little bit confused then on NOx. Is how do you, what happens if you don't meet the state's threshold for NOx?
This is Bryce Meeker, the applicant chiming in. If we don't reach the threshold, we would either not build additional capacity or look for some process adjustments that could lower the NOx, like catalytic injections and things in our process that could change the chemistry of the exhaust gas.
Okay.
Clearly, we'd be successful in that so that we could continue our path of adding more lines. But we want to make sure that we're below the threshold, which for each individual line would be a third of the threshold.
Would that production vary depending on inputs?
Uh, yes, it does, it is related somewhat to the inputs.
Okay.
But.
Anything else, the planning board on this? Any other questions that have come up since the written ones?
Yes, one real fast one, and that is whether DEC would consider monitoring this facility for air and solid waste compliance more frequently, given the newness of its, its process?
I, I believe that was already addressed with the, we're going to have additional stack tests off the bat with the D C then, because it is a new process. Just so you understand, stack, that stack test is a pretty, you know, we've got to put in a lot of gas testing equipment. It's, it's a pretty expensive thing. But we're, we're all for it as well, just because we want to be sure that we're, you know, within compliance, and we want to know exactly what's coming out of the process, because it's a chance to adjust it as well.
I would think, and this is just my, my off-the-seat-of-my-pants thought on this, but I would think that Biochar is probably going to want to be monitoring all this anyways, because I'm assuming that this is not a one-off facility. So it seems being the first one, that you guys are going to be watching this stuff really closely for future projects, am I?
My, my. Light cox, light cox. Want to know everything about this as it moves forward.
Yep, that is 100% correct.
So on, following that up, our, our process as a town is also going to be watched or reviewed by other towns that are being proposed as sites or whatever, which is why we're trying to get this right the first time.
That is also, yes.
Yeah, I, I, I think it's fair for us to try to do it right so that it can be used as an example, which will help Biochar and DEC and future towns also. Any other questions from the panel?
Not for me, John. I'm good. Thanks.
Okay, Meredith? Eric? And Ann?
So all, all set, John. I've, you know, I've missed this in the, in the regular meetings. I've missed a couple of meetings when these guys were presenting, so I've just kind of taken it in here with my notes.
Okay, all right. I think it was, I think it was a good group of questions. I think we've gathered some information here that can be useful. Jim, I don't know where, I, I mean, I would say the meeting's complete unless Bio, or any of the other people that are attending have something I'd like to add to the record as far as our discussion today?
Yeah, the, the, the primary mission was to hear from the planning board members and provide further information to their questions and their concerns. That was, I, I, I hope we fulfilled that mission. That, that was the purpose behind this.
I think it was a nice, comprehensive group of information that was collected, myself. So anybody from Biochar or from DEC, any other comments?
I guess just the next steps, maybe it's helpful just to summarize the next steps forward.
Um, well, we, we left this, we had the public hearing opened and closed, and we did do a preliminary assessment of, you know, using a form. And I believe there were six to seven items that came up in the, you know, the monitor, potential large impact. And so now it's, it's at a point where we've got to take up part three and come to a declaration. What what I might suggest to the applicant is to, you know, provide a summary document based on the information today, and any further clarification you want to provide, get that in by our deadline for submission in February, and we get this back on to February meeting and and pick up where we left off, which is where we're, you know, going through our part two, making sure we're, we're, you know, everybody's comfortable with those responses that they came to in light of the new information, and then go into part three. But any further clarifications the applicant would like to offer based on today, I think that would be helpful. I know, I, I'm looking at other board members to, you know, also, you know, chime in. But that, that would be my, that would be my assessment from, from my position.
Jim?
Yeah.
I'm not having any luck pulling it up right now, but is Saratoga Biochar on our agenda for January?
No, they are not, because we were, you know, we were in a, a position coming out of the last meeting. If you all recall, we were thinking we were going to have to get, you know, a, a third party, you know, input from a consultant to review the, the responses given. And then the suggestion was made to off, to maybe consider DEC taking over lead agent status. And that's when Beth preferred to have this meeting as a means to provide the information and see if we can go forward as, as we are.
All right, so Jim, what else were we waiting for? Submissions from them. And the reason I'm asking this is we're at the 12th. I know we're inside that two-week submission.
That's correct.
I realize that, to the same degree, if it was submitted on the 10th, the information we collected today, it would probably be coming to us a week from.
I, I mean, if you're comfortable trying to put this on for January, you know, you as a board, I, I will certainly do that. I was, you know.
Well, that's what I was asking, is we're having a special meeting. If that was the purpose of the special meeting, was to collect the information and be able to continue forward, I was going to address the board and ask if they would like to make a motion to do that. If not, that's okay. I understand. If everybody needs more time to kind of review and all, I get that. So at this point, then, I guess I would do that. I would ask the members of the board that are here in this meeting with a quorum, if anybody would like to make a motion to accept this information that we collected today and consider it within the window as far as us being able to have time to review it and all, the submission dates. consider it within the window as far as us being able to have time to review it and all the submission dates and move ahead with putting Biochar on the meeting of the 24th? No, yes.
Yep.
And if not, the other thing is, is if that, I remember, and this is, this has nothing to do with D E C or Biochar, but we've sent out a notice with um, a meeting that I consider to be okay to do one meeting of, but if we add Biochar, we may change our mind. And in that case, then we might add a meeting to like the 31st of January.
That's correct.
If we did that, this information is, and any response they may have to it is well within that two week window. So I'll leave that to the board if somebody would like to make a motion.
Well, before, before motions made, can I ask a question? Jim, did you receive any feedback from your email requesting uh, board input on whether it was one or two meetings this month?
Uh, the only, the only person I heard was, was from John. He indicated he was comfortable, but that's at, at five items that, that were, that were listed. This would be a sixth item. So usually at that point, we are in a case where we have three and three or four and two, you know, on the meeting. We usually go then to a second meeting at that, at that level.
Okay. But is the, with the purpose of Saratoga Biochar and, and John, I'll ask you what you're thinking. Um, is the purpose of per se, just hypothetically, we add them to, uh, the agenda for this month. Is it just to complete the E A F? At that point, would we then move on to another applicant and, and keep this process going for Biochar or are we doing something more?
Oh, gosh. Um.
What's your thought?
That would be up to the board.
Yeah.
We do have members of the board that aren't here today, but we have enough to make a meeting. So we do.
Yeah, we have six members on it. As a matter of fact, Adam joined after I, I did my introductory remarks. So we, we have six.
Because if I, if I understand it and recall correctly, um, the, the comment was made, um, and I, I think it was, uh, it was Beth saying that D E C's position was that the traffic and, uh, noise, excuse me, impacts were, were more of a local level. Those were the things that we were better suited to review. Everything I've gotten out of this meeting leads me to believe that any air impacts, um, are, are basically, we're, we're just going to acknowledge that there are impacts and the permitting process is going to be the vehicle that determines whether or not those are, are, uh, in, in excess of a permit. There's not really much for us as a board to do other than acknowledge that the, the applicant has, has informed us of what their intended outputs or their estimated outputs are.
Okay.
That's my, that's what I'm getting out of this. So if that's the case and our, our duty this month is to complete the E A F and focus on traffic and noise and the, the type of impacts that we normally deal with, I personally would be comfortable with being able to achieve that. Um, but, but I don't want to start going into, you know, uh, getting into a more of a review beyond that this month. I think if we're going to do that, we're going to need a second meeting.
Understanding from what I heard, this is Ann, is that the D E C permitting process does not address the seeker thresholds. That that's a community issue.
Okay.
And I, I think maybe, um, we ought to consider again whether, um, you know, this is a project that warrants an E I S. And if it's not an E I S that we proceed with that proposal, we considered a couple of weeks ago that there be a consultant that advises on the overall impact of this project. I am curious as to whether the New Jersey facility, um, used an E I S process to guide it. And E I S is not, you know, the end of the world. Sometimes you need to do one. I don't know if this is the case, but I, I think it's a question.
And that's for specifically for what we discussed today, the air inputs?
The air, solid waste, whole thing.
Okay, okay. All right.
So what is the two week, what is the two week window that you're concerned about, John?
Well, it, it, so normally for, obviously we don't have special meetings like we're doing right now. Okay. To collect information, we have information sent to us and there is a window of two weeks, I believe, that the information has to be into the building department before the next meeting. That gives them time to print up materials and get it sent out to all of us and we have time to review it. Um, I know personally it's a beef of mine. I don't like getting handed stuff the night of the meeting and being expected to read a 20 some page and, you know, impact statement or traffic report while I'm in the middle of a meeting. Um, so that's why we have that, that two week threshold. We stick pretty tight to that. So in that case, if we were to stick tight to that, they're, they're not going to get that two weeks before the next meeting for the information we collected today. All right. It, it's just because it's within that two weeks. That brings it into the February meeting in order to have that collected by then. Um, the other thing is if we did schedule them and we decided we needed a second meeting, that would put us into the 31st, which resets that two week window to the 17th of January, which means they have plenty of time.
Okay. So it's not a requirement that we act within a specific period of time. It's, we get information in time. Okay.
To make sure that we get information in time for us to be able to reflect on it. Um, and react instead of having a whole bunch of stuff dumped in our lap two days before the meeting. Um, I don't know if it's in our code or requirement, but it is a, it is a thing that we stick to pretty tight at the town. So I don't want to like, I'm, I'm not looking to like, say, hey, let's just forget it or waive it for this moment. My only condition was the fact that if it had been turned into the town by the 10th, we probably wouldn't have seen it by the 12th anyways. So we have it in front of us because it was an in-person meeting.
Go ahead.
I'd also like to point out that we've already done one special meeting this month for Biochar and that's this one here. It's not their fault. It was our request with D E C, but we've already done one this month. So I don't think we would be remiss in saying that, that if we waited till February, we haven't already gone out of our way to do something for Biochar this month. You know, a special beyond the regular meeting. So I, I, I'm trying to leave it up to the board to decide if they want to, if they want to go ahead with this on the 24th or if they want to schedule a second meeting for the 31st and spread stuff out or what you want to do. And if we, and Jim, it's, okay, if we don't want to make that decision right now, nobody wants to put this into a, a motion. Can we make that decision via email? Um, everybody gets a chance to think about it and then chime in what they want to do.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I, I, like, like you suggest, uh, the two week timeframe, I, and I think that's a pretty good guide, would be, you know, next Wednesday. So, um, you know, i- i- it's up to the board. If you want to try and do it now and then, and we would, we would schedule the January 31st, we'd split the agenda accordingly. Or, um, wait and see what you want to do.
Well, to split the agenda, just to be clear on that, we have to make a decision pretty quick to be fair to the other applicants.
Correct. Or, or we could do five and one. You know, you could just do Biochar on the 31st.
And to be honest with you, I'm okay with doing it in February. So I don't hear a motion from the floor to split the meeting. And I don't hear a motion from the floor to accept it as within the two week window. So as far as I can see, we're looking at February.
Right. And, 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 and I, again, I just think it would be helpful if the applicant could pull together a, you know, a summary document that clarifies a lot of the points made today and submit it. I, I think that would be helpful to the review process.
Uh, Jim, yes, I, this is Ray with Biochar. I hadn't had a chance to respond to that, but we will absolutely do that and we'll do it quickly.
Okay, great.
Well, hearing nothing else, then I would say that our special meeting, January 12th for D E C and Biochar has exhausted its agenda. If I can get a motion from somebody to end our meeting, I'd appreciate it.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Ann. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Jerry. Any, any discussion?
I just want to, I just want to extend a heartfelt appreciation to D E C and their staff for, for agreeing to do this. It was very, very helpful, very informative and it's very much appreciated.
Agreed.
Yeah, thank you very much, guys.
Thank you.
You're welcome. If anything else comes up as you work through the process and you want to reach out to me on that, feel free to do so.
Thank you, Beth. You've been wonderful to work with and very responsive. It's much appreciated.
Hearing no other discussion, all in favor of closing the meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Close. We're set. Thank you, Jim.
Yep. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Thank you.